Sixty seconds.
Where's Megan? Megan, are you taking notes?
Twenty seconds. Fifteen seconds. Cut. Nine, eight, seven, six, five, four, three, two.
Lift off. Hello, everyone. Welcome to the Thursday, April 3rd Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting here in Lower Marion. We'll start with our Pledge of Allegiance and I will ask our, who do we got here? I will ask our township manager here, Ernie, to lead us in the pledge. Thank you. So, seeing, are the mics working okay? We're new to this space. Everyone can hear me? Good? Okay, so, welcome, everyone. Seeing all three commissioners present, we'll call to order the April 3rd, 2025 meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Thank you for joining us here in Lower Marion Township. This is the third Commissioners' meeting we've taken together on the road, and I'm particularly excited to be home because we've had a meeting on the road in Limerick where Commissioner DeBello lives, we have every meeting in Norristown where Commissioner Winder lives, and now I have the shortest commute after we're done. And you're going to hear about some very exciting things because the work that is happening here in Lower Marion Township, thanks to our staff, the managers, thanks to all the Commissioners, the fourteen Commissioners here in Lower Marion, and thanks to our partnership with them, we've been able to make great advances on a number of issues from housing to sustainability to transportation to parks and trails. I'm going to talk a little bit about those in my remarks, and we'll hear more in the, in the meeting on the things that we're voting on. So, I also want to thank our county staff that helped make this possible, possible. Gabby, Judy, Scott, Scott Communications, Megan, everyone who pulled this together. Thank you for bringing us here tonight. So, I may be biased, but I think Lower Marion is, should I say it or not? I can say it here. It's the best place to live in Monco, and please don't send that to any other sixty-one municipalities, but I'm so grateful because many of the things that we talk about and that we've done at the county level have been modeled in Lower Marion, and we see that all the time when it comes to the policies that we're working on. So, just before this, the three Commissioners, we went on a tour of what's happening in Ardmore. We saw an affordable housing development that the county is supporting. So, as you all know, housing is one of the critical issues that we face as a country, the, the lack of affordability, the lack of supply, and that affects us right here in Lower Marion. It affects us across Montgomery County, but local governments are stepping up, whether it's through the use of the zoning authority here, whether it's through creative mechanisms of finance and funding at the state level and through the county, we're doing what we can to make housing more affordable. So, we're going to hear a little more about Ardmore House Two, a project right here that's going to create forty-eight new affordable housing units for seniors right in Ardmore, and I'm proud to share that the county awarded five million dollars towards that project to the township. It's a historic investment in some of the most vulnerable members of our community and on the issue of housing and security, and it's just an example of the collaboration that it takes to make things happen. That project would not have happened without leadership in the township, in the county, and in the state as well. So, we'll, we'll hear about that. Second, on the issue of sustainability, this last year, the county awarded two hundred fifty thousand dollars towards the installation of solar panels on rooftops in the Lower Marion Library System. So, we'll hear more about that project. And by the way, shout out to our local libraries. Did you know next week is National Library Week? Anybody know that? Anybody work in the libraries? Anybody visit the libraries here in Lower Marion? Raise your hand. Give them a round of applause. This, every, every weekend, we often take my son to libraries within the system, Narberth Library, after we've been to the park, and it's just a great asset for young families, for people in the community, whether it's storytime or any of the number of activities that happen in our libraries. I know it's, it's critical to so many of the families here. We've also committed to supporting sustainability efforts, of course, beyond that. At the county level, you may have heard, we're working on a hydroelectric dam in Norristown on the Schuylkill, which would get us to a hundred percent renewable energy in just a few years if we can get through the federal permits, which is the hard part. But Lower Marion really led the way on a number of sustainability goals that inspired the county as well. So, we look forward to working together on that. Beyond sustainability, we have the Monco 2040 Grant Program, which has invested about eighteen million in a hundred and forty grants across the county. And here in Lower Marion, that includes one for the Indigo Bike Share Program, which is looking at growing in the Balla Shopping Center and the Office Park. We funded a hundred and fifty thousand towards the Windwood Valley Park Stream Restoration, and many of these things have visible improvements that make it easier for people to get from one place to another, that make parks accessible for all residents, and really excited that, you know, we have a number of those still in the pipeline that are being considered and to come. So, one of the great things that's happened across the county that you may not know, but you may see through use of the Kinwood Trail, is that we've continued to invest in parks and trails, and we just achieved last year one hundred miles of trails in Montgomery County. So, that's a historic milestone. Thank you. You're going to hear from in a second, who runs our parks and trails in our planning department, but, you know, this is, this is a public resource. It's a, it's a, you know, a big reason why people love living here is because the trails are accessible to everyone. It's a safe place to get from A to B and is important for physical health, mental health, and, you know, the fact that we're, we're continuing to invest in that will, I think, only continue to be appreciated. For those who don't know, there's the, the Main Line Greenway, which is a project that is really being pioneered down here in Lower Marion, and I started off, actually, before I even held office, I went on a bike ride with Chris Laswig, and he gave us the tourist crystal here. I want to thank Chris for all of his leadership. He's back here, but, you know, creating a way to cycle from the Kinwood Heritage Trail to Stonely Garden is just going to be such a great thing for all of the residents down here. We look forward to making real and investing in the kind of, you know, vision that you've had over, over so many years. Okay, so that's a little bit about our collaboration, and you're going to hear more. I'm going to tell you a little bit about what we're voting on. So, something very exciting on today's agenda for the county is an investment in modern, transparent, and accountable government. So, earlier this year, we outlined a plan to make sure that Monco is working harder, smarter, and centering innovation on all of our work. So, that included the creation of an Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance, and we are committed to making sure that the county is a place where we're leading on, on using new technology, deploying artificial intelligence, optimizing the way that we function to better serve county residents. So, on today's agenda, we're investing, voting to invest, a million dollars over three years to open public data, both to the public and to make it easier for people to assess whether we're actually delivering on the job or not, which I think will overall improve performance. So, you're going to hear more on that before we vote on it, but with these new tools, we're going to be able to track progress and goals, make our budgeting platform even more accessible so that people can get a sense of what the county is doing and how we're delivering. Second, you're going to hear about a commission on the use of artificial intelligence for public good, and that's something that we're going to create with the hopes that we can pioneer different strategies that serve the public. So, finally, on my comments, I want to note two things about the month. So, April is National Autism Awareness Month, and we have today some representatives of the ARC Alliance, which is the largest national community-based organization dedicated to advocating for and with those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I think our, the CEO, Pat Leo, is here. Are you here? Pat Leo's back here. I'm going to ask you guys to come up in just a moment. COO Jessica Wagamon, is that correct? You can work on that. Tell me when you get up here. Executive Director, plus Tim Quinn, a Monco resident with autism, and his mom Pam is here tonight. So, I want to take a moment to thank you all for serving as advocates for individuals with disabilities and for the autism community at large, and invite you all up for a commendation for your, your work in the community. So, please run up.
Hi. So, my name is Pat Leo. I'm the CEO of the ARC Alliance. The ARC Alliance has been providing services in Montgomery County for, since nineteen fifty-one. We serve individuals with intellectual developmental disabilities and autism with, we serve early intervention services, support coordination, and guardianship. We are very grateful to the Commissioners in Montgomery County for their continued support and for all of the individuals. I thank you on behalf of the ARC Alliance, as well as all the individuals we serve in the county that depend so much on the services we receive. I know there's a lot of concern right now, but we have great support here in Montgomery County. So, thank you.
Okay, so then for my final comment, before I turn it over to Commissioner Winder, you may have seen on April 1st, we announced a historic merger, Montgomery County, Pennsylvania, Montgomery County, Maryland, and, you know, we thought it was important to put our differences aside, whether it be, you know, the hundred fifty miles, the state of Delaware, you know, we put all of those things aside, and in the goals of scale and efficiency, we thought we should merge. So, it was April 1st when we said that. Just, I just want to confirm, everyone knows that, but we could still claim famous residents of both counties. We do that anyway. So, with that, I will turn it over to Commissioner Winder.
That was a really great April Fools joke, and for those that follow us on Facebook, you can see the actual posts. So, good evening, everyone. How's everyone doing? Doing okay? Good. Well, thank you so much for being here, and it's great to be out on our third meeting on the road. I want to thank Lower Marion Township for your collaboration on tonight's event, and thank you always, as Commissioner McKeesha said, to our dedicated staff at the county, who, we have a lot of wild ideas, things that we want to do, and they're the ones that make it happen. So, we couldn't do it without our county staff. As we're here on the road in Lower Marion, I just wanted to take some time to highlight how the county is collaborating with the township to improve roads and trails in this part of the county. Lower Marion Township and Narberth Borough have been working with Montgomery County's Planning Commission on an active transportation plan. Active transportation is any, is anything that gets us moving physically, whether it's walk, walking, cycling, or rolling. The goal of this plan is to identify and develop safe, sustainable, and accessible opportunities to travel around and between communities. This includes making intersections easier to navigate and improving traffic calming, traffic calming. That's, that's a new, that's, that's new. The plan involved a survey to many residents here, which will soon be wrapped up. And so, what I would say is, Neil, next time we're here, I'll expect to see you on roller skates. Does anybody want to see him on roller skates? Yeah, yes, right, yes. Last, late last year, Lower Marion Township was awarded over two hundred and seventy thousand dollars in federal funding to make Montgomery Avenue safer. This funding was secured through a strong partnership between the county, the township, and the Delaware Valley Regional Planning Commission. The safe streets and roads for all grants are key components of a regional goal to make our roadways safer and more accessible. Good connections not, are not just about infrastructure. They allow people to move around safely, which strengthens our communities. Late last year, so, so, yes, so that's the end of that comment. So, I have a few high school students here that we want to take a moment to celebrate here. They are remarkable high school students with very strong community spirit. For lower, from Lower Marion High School, let's welcome Reese Appelstein and Lucia Ridgeway. Are you, are you here? I'm going to have you stand right, right, right up here for a second while I have some, and tell everybody what great things you've done. So, Reese and Lucia are the joint winners of Lower Marion's fifteenth annual Amazing Ace Competition. This contest raised over seventeen thousand for good causes. Reese performed a dance and lip synced to Madonna's classic hit Vogue. Who loves that song? We're not going to make you do that here tonight, but I'm sure it was great. Addict Philly, a youth center that caters towards LGBTQ plus persons that need support, will be the recipient of Reese's contest earnings. And Lucia participated in the competition as a caricature artist, drawing members of the audience as a character in under one minute, also while pretending to be act, actress, Jennifer Coolidge. She chose World Central Kitchen as her charity, which works to provide life-saving food relief to victims of disaster around the world. Lucia also had family impacted in the LA wildfires, so she performed with them on her mind and in her heart. And from Harrington High School, we have Sam Bay. Where is Sam? Sam, come on up. Sam is the winner of the twenty twenty-five Dr. Harrington Competition, Harrington High School's annual flagship talent contest and fundraiser. In its eighteenth year, students raised over sixty-one thousand dollars for the Jerseys for Kids Foundation and the Lower Marion Township Scholarship Fund. Sam performed an interpretive dance, and I love his reason for why he dedicated, decided to participate in the competition this year. His older brother took the same stage back when he was a senior and let Sam be in his act. So, we'd like to congratulate these students for your achievements. Not only are you talented, but you also stepped out of your comfort zones to lift others up and make a difference, not just a home, but everywhere those charity dollars will serve. So, congratulations to the three of you. Next up, we're inviting all school, school students from across the county to unleash their artistic talent this season. I'm pleased to announce that Montgomery County's Annual Art and Poetry of Freedom Contest is now open for applications for twenty twenty-five. This year's theme is Hope in Action. K through twelve students from across the county are encouraged to use their creativity to spread messages for the change they would like to see in the world. The contest winner will receive a hundred dollar gift card and will be honored at the county's Juneteenth Flag Raising Event on June eighteenth. Every year, the students inspire me with the depth of their work. The way these students can use art and poetry to share their vision for a better world and advocate for positive change, it speaks to the diversity of the talent we have across the county. So, applications are now open through May sixteenth, so get those pens and paints to paper. If you've never attended our, our Juneteenth Flag Raising Ceremony, it's incredibly moving, in, in great part because it's a wonderful opportunity to celebrate the voices and talents of our county's youngest residents. This focus on our youngest residents continues as next week is the Week of the Young Child. It's a nationwide movement to uplift the importance of early learning and recognize the people who help our children grow and thrive. As a working mother myself with a four-year-old at home, I know the challenges that parents face as they bring young children into a rapidly changing world, and I couldn't have gotten through the last four years, and Stephanie understands, and so does Neil, I couldn't have gotten through the last four years with my little guy if it wasn't for his Early Learning Center and the teachers that have really helped him thrive into an amazing little boy. I can't believe he'll be going into kindergarten this coming year. So, here are some examples of how Montgomery County is working hard to ensure the best possible start for our younger residents and the grownups who support them. We invested three point five million dollars into the county's childcare centers. We've designated one million to support young families affected by domestic violence. We increased our paid parental leave for our county employees. We provide childcare onsite for those engaging in our court system, and our early resource, Learning Resource Center offers hands-on support to childcare providers to create high-quality outcomes. We know the job takes a village, and the county is prepared to be a part of that village. I've got a couple more things here, and then I'll be done. As we think about supporting our village, April seventh through the thirteenth is National Public Health Week. This is a time, this time is focused on recognizing the contributions of our public health workers and highlighting issues that are important to advancing health equity and improving our community's health. Public health is often referred to as the invisible shield because much of the work happens behind the scenes to prevent disease. When things are good, you don't have much to think about. Here are just some things that our amazing Office of Public Health achieved recently to keep Montgomery County safe. We produced our first community health assessment, which summarizes important data about the health and well-being of our residents. We issued forty-two extreme weather alerts to protect our most vulnerable residents who may be living on the streets. Contained measles outbreaks in Monco through investigation and contact tracing. Distributed over thirty-seven thousand potassium iodine pills in the Limerick area. Conducted over sixty-six hundred inspections of dining facilities in our county. Collaborated on a training and certification of seven new community doulas, supporting Black and African-American residents and families, and so much more. I see Dr. Williams, our Director of Health and Human Services in the back. I want to thank you for your leadership and the great work of your public health team. Investing in public health is critical. Yeah, let's give her. Investing in public health is critically important for all of us. We thank our dedicated public health workers. We strongly support policies and infrastructure that facilitates the public's health, and I oppose potentially devastating cuts to the critical public health programs and roles at the federal level. This includes the infectious disease management, substance abuse, and mental health services, food, drug, and tobacco safety, and lead poisoning reduction. These are programs that don't just serve people directly. They impact all of us and keep all of our communities safe and healthy. And last but not least, I think, yep, last but not least, does everybody know that April is Stress Awareness Month? Does anybody know that? Okay. Has anybody been stressed this month? I mean, it's only, it's only the third, third day of April. Well, I've been stressed, and it's only the third day of April, but in all seriousness, we know that life can be stressful for a variety of reasons, and it's important for us to take note of ways we can lower our stress levels. Of course, there are things that we can do as individuals, taking walks, talking to friends, going to the gym, but as a leader, I consider it an important part of my role in making sure that our community has access to the resources they need, and that the county is enabling policies that encourage us to use those services. This includes policy of no wrong door for mental health services, so individuals can access care from various points of entry, whether through schools, clinics, or hospitals. One key resource I want to highlight tonight is Montgomery County's Mobile Crisis. Our Mobile Crisis Unit is a free of service, is free of service that is available twenty-four seven for county residents. Our crisis workers can offer immediate support for crisis situations through emotional support and crisis intervention. I'll repeat, this is a free resource, and I've used this resource for my own family. So, I want to encourage this, this community to leverage this resource. If you need, if you have a loved one that needs support, you can call our Monco's Mobile Crisis Team at one eight five five six three four HOPE. And the county also announced last year our plans to make a major investment in a behavioral health services available to our residents. in a behavioral health services available to our residents for our new Behavioral Health Crisis Center, which will be scheduled to be open in 2026. We have to recognize stress and those loved ones, friends and neighbors that might be struggling with mental health challenges, and that's the first step in coping. And so together, we can encourage ourselves and others to seek help, uh, before reaching a crisis point. So with that, I'll turn it over to my colleague, Commissioner DeBello.
Thank you. Uh, April's Stress Month?
It is, yeah.
Oh, wow. We're not stressed. I have to say, we have boardroom envy for sure. This is a great room here. And what a beautiful setup. We're really excited to be here in Lower, uh, Lower Marion. Uh, I didn't know you were from Lower Marion. Did you ever mention that? Like, Neil's a good guy. I'm only kidding around. Um, so we're really excited to be down here. And let me ask you a question. One of the, one of the big things that as three commissioners that we did last year right out of the chute back in April was we opened the Mill Creek Bridge. Who's excited about that? That was, uh, that was a big thing. You know, we got together, we said, we gotta get that bridge open a lot sooner than what was projected. We worked hard and we came down and, and had a ribbon cutting on the bridge and neighbors even showed up with champagne. So it was, it was a fun afternoon. So we're glad that we were able to do that. Well, we had sparkling cider.
Real champagne. Oh, maybe there was.
There, there might, I think some other people had champagne, but it was, it was a fun afternoon. And we're, we're happy to, that, that we were able to get that open for the Lower Marion residents. So, uh, you know, there's a lot that's been going on, as mentioned, and, you know, one of the things I, I get the opportunity to do this evening is I'm gonna recognize some different groups throughout, uh, not only throughout Lower Marion, but also, uh, in the county as well. And one of the groups that I want to, uh, start off recognizing is our Montgomery County Department of Public Safety. Uh, they're impacting people across Montgomery County every day. And they, and they're great partners with the volunteer firefighters and law enforcement throughout the county. You might not know many ways that they contribute to safety and sanity of our county. So let me tell you about a few things some of our public safety has done in the Lower Marion community so that you could get an idea of the ways they're here to help. One of the major aspects of their work is training and prepness. Their majesty, emergency training, uh, has been focused on Emergency, uh, Medical Services Division. Recently participated in an active shooter hostile event response exercise with an Arbreth ambulance and Lower Marion Police. That's a scenario that we might see in our nightmares and try to forget, but rest assured that they are actively preparing for it. Our Fire Academy is also in rental and training local firefighters. In 2024, they provided over five thousand five hundred, uh, total training hours and awarded thirty professional certifications to Lower Marion firefighters. And when you think of the major fire like we had over in Abington, uh, it seems like about two, about, what, like four or five weeks ago or six weeks ago, uh, we had, um, fire departments from probably sixty-five plus different fire, uh, around Montgomery County or neighboring counties, and it was, it was the biggest fire that we, that we could, uh, track back and see over history in Montgomery County. It was unbelievable, and ninety-eight percent of all the firefighters that showed up on scene, uh, were all volunteers. And that, um, what was really amazing about that fire was that no, there was no injuries, no deaths, and no secondary fires as well. So all the firefighters, all the first responders did an amazing job. And similarly, the, the Law Enforcement Division hosted forty training days for two hundred and seven Lower Marion Police Officers last year on the firearms range at the Public Safety Training Campus. They're also hosting several training courses for the Lower Marion Police Department this year, including traffic crash investigations, emergency vehicle operations, and command courses. And last but not least, the Technology Division has worked with Lower Marion Fire Departments to upgrade their radios because we all know communications is extremely important. So with that, um, I do, I think Brian McCoun, Brian, you here? Brian, why don't you stand up? He heads up our public, uh, Public Safety Emergency Management. He's doing an incredible job. And I, I don't know if you have any other stuff for any of yous. Thank you for everything that you're doing. And you have to excuse me. I, I think I have spring allergies because I'm a little stuffy as well. So, you know, a couple other things that we have in the Emergency Communications Division, there, that's, that's who answers the phone when you call nine-one-one. They dispatched over thirty-four thousand calls in Lower Marion Township in 2024 and, uh, almost seventy-five hundred calls year-to-date in 2025. Hazardous Materials Response Team has made three responses to Lower Marion Township in the recent years. And we have a UV drone, uh, UAV, or better known as our drone team, responded to four incidents in Lower Marion in 2024. And it's a partnership at Lower Marion Fire Department, and our Urban Search and Rescue Team is deployed on any technical rescue in Lower Marion Township. That team has responded to a few notable incidents in Lower Marion in the past few years. There was a stormwater drain, uh, rescue in Bryn Mawr, as well as a trench rescue in Bryn Mawr and a collapsed deck in Gladwin. These are the folks that aren't afraid, uh, of confined, confined spaces. So another big thank you to our DPS team. They are invaluable service to the Lower Marion community and, uh, and the whole county at large. So some other things I want to talk about, we have, uh, some volunteer organizations. I think some are here this evening. Um, so, let's see. Yeah, so when I, when I reach out your name or your group, please stand up. Um, and we'd like to recognize you because April is National Volunteer Month. And in honor of that celebration, we wanted to, uh, spend a little bit of time in recognizing a few volunteer organizations. And at then, we have everyone, at, at the end, we'll have everyone come up, uh, for accommodations, and, and we're gonna take a photo. So just to start with talking about public safety and the importance of our first responders in the county, it's important to note that the vast majority, as I mentioned, the vast majority of our firefighters, EMT, first responders in the county are volunteers. So if you're out and about and you see anyone that, uh, that's part of the firefighters or EMT, please take a moment and thank them for their service. Because when, when the time calls, when we're running away, they're running in. Uh, so they're a valuable resource throughout Montgomery County, and we thank them for everything that they do. Uh, as well as our police department, uh, they, they're, I know Lower Marion has an incredible police department down here working extremely hard to ensure that the, the health and safety and well-being of all, uh, Lower Marion, uh, residents. So I think here this evening, we have Narbreth Ambulance. Um, there, we have three members, I believe, from the group, uh, I'd like to recognize. And if these are, uh, if you're not here, I apologize, but if you're here, please stand up. Al Davy, John Mick, and Robert Weber for their service to the community. Well, I'm told that Chief Mick is also a Lower Marion detective, so I guess he didn't have to leave the building to come here this evening. Um, next group, so please, it's pleased, uh, we're, we're gonna bring everyone up at the end. We have organizations helping our seniors. We have ElderNet of Lower Marion and Arbreth. We have Michelle Raymond here from ElderNet. Michelle, you here?
We appreciate all your prepared for the seniors, so thank you very much.
We have Palm Center. Uh, is anyone from Palm Center here this evening? No?
We can clap for them anyway.
So another, uh, important aspect of the community outreach is, is our food banks. Um, and I know that, you know, throughout Montgomery County, the service that these food banks are providing are, uh, are amazing because we're seeing a growing number of people in need of, of food, either, uh, every day or every, every, every few days or so. Um, so we want to thank, uh, everyone that has donated food or helped the food banks, uh, to help our, 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 our residents. And, uh, so we have Gigi, uh, I'm gonna mess this up, I think, huh? Yeah, Moffett, Gigi Moffett? Did I say it right? And anyone, you have some other people with you? Awesome, great job. Is Ardmore Food Bank, Patrick here? Oh, stand up. We also have representatives from organizations providing a range of key services to those in need from education and wellness programs to housing and Medicare assistance. Um, we have, oh, boy, Monu, huh? Ms. Walker, uh, is here with us from Neighbor, Neighbors Helping Neighbors on the main line. Looks like to be congested. I've had this, RSVP, a King of Prussia-based service organization, organization that services all of Monco is here with us as well. We have Michelle Mole. Is Michelle here? And, uh, Gita Sev, oh, boy. Yes, I apologize. Uh, Gita, pardon me? Thank you. There you go. I, I gotta say, give it that one. And, and then we also have, uh, finally, we have some local chapters of League of Women Voters, uh, from Lower Marion and Arbreth League of Women Voters, Jamie Mogo. Where are we here? And we also is, uh, Dr. Amy Whitestrom from Abington, Sheltonham, Jake and Town, Eric, Jake and Town area leader. Well, thank you for promoting the importance of voting in our community. So with that, how about everyone that we called out, we'll bring them all once. We'll have it right in front here. We'll take a one big group picture, and then you have to cut the.
Yeah, we could stand here, behind here. Yeah, we could just stand here.
Stand here?
Yeah.
Sweet to meet you.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
How are you? Yeah. Yeah, thanks for all that you do. Thank you. Yeah, nice to be here soon. Yeah, I guess.
I guess.
Yeah, we can ask. Well. Yeah. You know, where are we on your watch?
I'm.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna move on to two presentations. The first is, uh, on sustainability from Paloma Villa, who's the Sustainability Manager here in Lower Marion Township. And then we're gonna hear on affordable housing from Charlie Doyle, Assistant Director of Planning here in Lower Marion. So I'll ask Paloma, uh, to come up.
This on? Good evening. I'm Paloma Vila. I'm the Sustainability Manager for Lower Marion Township, and I'm here to talk to you about Lower Marion's Sustainability Program. Um, now, while I'm covering the program of sustainability that began with the hiring of a Sustainability Manager, I do want to make it clear that Lower Marion Township's commitment to sustainability spans back decades before the program as we know it started. But what this program has done is allow the township to use an informed, data-driven, prioritized approach towards sustainability. It's allowed the township to be clear on what its goals are as an organization and as a community. And it's allowed us to communicate those goals and progress towards those goals to stakeholders to integrate sustainability. to integrate sustainability into township operations, and to pursue programs that don't fit squarely into any existing township operations. Similarly, Lower Marion Township's partnership with Montgomery County goes back a long time before this program started. But what I'll be highlighting are the ways in which Montgomery County's support has been instrumental to this program's success since its conception. Our sustainability efforts are largely informed by a greenhouse gas inventory and forecast that were conducted through the DEP's Local Climate Action Planning Program in partnership with Penn State University. And here you can see a high-level summary of our greenhouse gas emissions as an organization as well as a community. So after hiring its first sustainability manager and developing a standing sustainability committee on the Board of Commissioners, the township's first order of business was to develop its first sustainability plan. And Montgomery County provided crucial support throughout this process. And we borrowed John Lusher from the Montgomery County Planning Commission to join me on the writing team. And with his expert guidance, we not only wrote the plan, but we planned the plan together. So we strategized together on how to best engage with community stakeholders and what the plan would need to be to ensure that it could be translated into policy. So John Lusher and I worked closely over nearly two years to conduct various means of outreach aimed at refining the township's sustainability goals and vision and developing implementable strategies to achieve those goals. And what resulted at the end of that was a very thorough, very comprehensive, but not entirely readable document. And this is another area where Montgomery County's support was invaluable. The Planning Commission again lent us one of their incredible staff members, Anastasia Summers, whose graphic design work made this into an aesthetically gorgeous, very readable, easy to follow, and easy to communicate plan. And on June 7th, 2023, the Board of Commissioners received the first, the final draft of the sustainability plan. And that plan's available on our township website as well as all of the township libraries. Thanks again to the libraries for having that. And we really just couldn't have done this without the support of Montgomery County, especially John and Anastasia, who are, have the patience of saints and are truly wonderful asset to, to the county as well as they were an asset to us. So since the plan was received, we've worked on strategic and prioritized implementation. We've worked as an organization to integrate strategies into our operations, our capital improvement program, and our operating budgets. This is a list of some of the projects that we've been working on since the plan was received. And the first one listed is a program of installing solar panels on township buildings to generate onsite renewable energy. We were able to get this project into the capital improvement program almost immediately following the finalization of the sustainability plan, thanks in large part to federal subsidies and the award of a Monco 2040 grant, which you referenced earlier. We're also working on electrifying our fleet vehicles, installing electrical vehicle charging stations for public use, and on innovative compost pilot programs. For the sake of time, I won't list everything that we're working on, but you can see some of them here and on our township website. And I hope to answer any questions if there's time. I know time is short today though.
Oh, thank you so much for your work, and I'll just say that, you know, I appreciate that Lower Marion started when in terms of with a Chief Sustainability Officer or Manager.
Twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, okay. But I'm really excited because we're trying to do that now at the county level, and you really set a clear model and example on how comprehensive we can be both for the operations of the municipality, but then also the community as a whole. Do you, do you have any questions?
Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah, we'll do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right. Next up, we have Charlie Doyle. Thank you, Charlie.
If you could just bear with me while I just load my presentation very quickly. All right, thank you. Sorry about that. So before I begin, I'm Charlie Doyle, the Assistant Director for Building Planning here at Lower Marion Township. I'd like to express my gratitude to the county commissioners, not only for your support, but the support of your staff who have been crucial in assisting the township and the planning department as planning partners. Without their assistance and without your help, we wouldn't be where we are right now. And, you know, leading to the truly results, true results that we've already seen throughout the township. So with that, I'll show you where we are, where we're going. The Township Board of Commissioners brought together a group of ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee members prior to my beginning here in 2021 as Assistant Director to address the affordable housing issue within Lower Marion Township. They've been in line with the policies that were established by the county to create and address issues related to access of quality housing that is safe and affordable for the variety of income levels. This ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee then guides the board priorities, which I'll be reviewing up here. One, beginning with Ardmore House Two, following with that with zoning code reform, and finally, housing incentives, needs assessment and action plan that we're currently working on. So before I bring you into the, the goals and objectives of the Board of Commissioners, I'd like to bring the attention to our committee members, the Chair, Commissioner Stevenson, Commissioners both Sean Kramer and Gilda Kramer, Commissioners Woodring and Commissioners Elav. We meet with the objective every month to create meaningful board policy consistent with the comprehensive plan, discuss national, regional, and local affordable housing news, and explore strategies through, through our housing analysis and research. So with that, our number one priority by the board for affordable housing is certainly the Ardmore Two Project. It's an exciting opportunity for the township to increase its stock of affordable housing through contributions to the township made by both the township, the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency, and of course, you at the county. Where this, the genesis for this project actually began when it was selected through pandemic recovery funds. So as a quick refresher of the project itself, it is a forty-eight unit multifamily affordable housing development for seniors age sixty-four and older. It's a four-story building, one bedrooms, with varying levels of area median income reaching from twenty percent all the way to sixty percent. The township has dedicated their land for public parking, which is the existing use for that, that land use. Currently, the status of this project, the Board of Commissioners is set to review along with the Building and Planning Committee in the month of May. So how did we get to this point? Again, that seed funding that came originally from the ARPA funds from the county, and then the county also generously dedicated an additional $2 million for a total of $5 million in contributions to the almost $20 million project, and we thank you very much for that. In doing so, the township is also reserved for units for the county's Your Way Home Program. The other funding mechanisms that were used were receiving the Pennsylvania Housing Finance Agency funds for a total of $13.2 million in LITC or Low Income Housing Tax Credits, as well as $1 million from ARPA funds from Lower Marion Township and $700,000 from our Housing Trust Fund. We have consulting partners that we've joined with, both Human Good East and Genesis Housing, and anticipate construction to begin in the summer of 2025. Another goal of our board, our zoning code reform and incentives really began with the 2020 adoption of our zoning code, where we adopted policies to promote moderate housing income levels for incentive of a four-story addition to a multifamily building. So that required things like creating new definitions, which may seem very obvious, but essential to nail the semantics there as well. So things like affordable housing, being at thirty percent of the gross income of your, you know, that includes also any utilities that you'd have, as well as moderate income housing, where we define that as eighty percent of the AMI or area median income. So this incentive was created going through the TC One District, which is our town center district. Again, with that fourth story incentive, you neither, either needed to create five units at a minimum or twenty percent of the units of that building for moderate income, income housing, or contribute five percent of the construction costs. So just to give you an idea, one of the projects that we did have in, right here in Suburban Square in Colter Ave, created a bulk of the, the funds that we created for that Housing Trust Fund that we're using then to flex for the Ardmore House Two Project. We're also working with developers, for two examples here, one being that incentive that was actually negotiated with on three fifty-five West Lancaster, which is coming up pretty soon for development. We're seeing final plans coming up very soon. We'll increase the, the number of affordable housing units for moderate housing income by twenty-five units for that project. And then we also worked with a project in Balakenwood for one eleven Presidential, which is a very large building, it's four hundred and twenty-five units of the mixed-use multifamily building. And we were able to actually just work with the developers themselves to get an in-kind contribution of twenty-one units at the moderate income level, and then another twenty-one units at the workforce housing level, which is still a hundred and twenty percent of the AMI, but still much better than the other costs that we've seen for apartments around here. And then finally, the township and the, and the ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee have worked together to create an RFP that's been out for a housing needs and assessment and action plan. So the purpose here is to get a detailed understanding through the housing inventory of the current housing stock and create some, create some pragmatic policy decisions that promote and increase affordable housing within the township. The housing needs and assessment and action plan itself, the housing assessment consists of analyzing housing, demographic trends, and socioeconomics to inform the housing action plan, which then creates policy recommendations that reasonably promote attainable and affordable housing throughout the township. Again, that request for proposal is out now, and it's due on April tenth. And finally, so I'd like to conclude again by thanking you and commending some of the, the work that your, your staff has done here. First, begin with Scott France and the Montgomery County Planning Commission. They were essential, and their staff contributions were essential in helping towards where we are today. And I really do thank Scott. He runs a type chip over there, and we appreciate all the help that they get. That goes through, you know, things like, you know, helping us with the restart Monco, housing affordability, and as well as their workforce housing reports, which are an excellent series for resources. Again, their, their staff met with us to present to the ad hoc Affordable Housing Committee meeting where they presented an assessment of our current status and then provided recommendations for affordable housing. And then we also use your data all the time, so that really helps inform us, and we'll be using that for the housing inventory itself. And can't forget the land development review process that you guys have helped with. And then finally, I have to also thank Kelly Silver at the Department of Housing and Community Development. She's been a fantastic champion for Lower Marion Township. And since the inception of Ardmore House Two, she's been supportive in navigating the process as a liaison to, to getting this project done. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Good, thank you so much.
Quick comment. I just thank you for your, your presentation. I want to just thank Lower Marion for having the courage to tackle what we know is a national crisis. And we know we have sixty-two municipalities across Montgomery County, and Lower Marion is leading by example. And so when we're talking to other municipalities, we point to what Lower Marion is doing. I know that affordable sometimes gets a bad name, but we need to change the narrative around what affordable actually means. So I want to just thank you for your leadership and for Lower Marion for having the courage to build more housing so people can afford to live in this great community. So thank you.
Yeah, I'll add one thing, which is, you know, on the tour we just went on, it's important to think about the full mix of housing options and, and possibilities and, you know, we need more affordable housing, we also just need more housing across the board, and there have been creative ways to get more density, which is a good thing, because when you have people that are walkable to, you know, the train, you have this lively Main Street, as we see in Ardmore. We all were just at a ribbon cutting at Wonder, which is, we'll talk about, which is quite a wonder. There's seventeen different kinds of food that you can get from one kitchen. You should check it out. But we were just there, but just like, you, you don't get those kinds of Main Streets and activity, economic activity happening unless you have density. And so it's great to see, you know, we were at Cricket Flats and a number of other developments in that area, which have, provided more housing options as well. Got anything?
The, where'd he go?
Right here.
Right in front. He's hiding. The, the covenants on affordable housing, are they indefinite, or they run out, or what happens with the sale of the property, or?
So that gets recorded in the covenant for the deed for the property and is, you know, in the life of that, of that building.
The life of the building.
Yeah.
Then, and what, when you did the traffic studies, what did you see, an increase in traffic with that high density, or?
Well, naturally, you're gonna have, the higher density you have, the more increased amount of traffic. It just depends on the, you know, the modes that are being used. The, there's, we've come to promote these projects as being mixed-use projects as well to keep some livelihood going on in the bottom of these buildings as well. So we've, you know, been filling them with retail, office and commercial as well. So it's not just, you know, one type of building. We're, we're promoting the mixed-use style buildings as well.
I guess the intention is for many residents that would go in there to use the rail? For most part, or is that?
Uh, yeah, so that's a great question. So we did actually adopt, I didn't want to, you know, belabor anything too much, but we did make adoptions upon recently expansion of the low-income affordable housing. So I was speaking before about, you know, how important it is to, to really nail the definitions that you have within your zoning code in order to address these. So one of ours was making sure that we nailed that low-income multifamily housing to make sure that we could expand what we already have, but then keep that curtailed, you know, to, to what we have as existing right now, where then we can create policy later that would piggyback off of that, if that makes sense.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so with that, we will move to the first public comment period. And this is for today's pending votes, resolutions, bids, bids, and RFPs and contracts for this meeting. So if you have a comment on that, you, you have three minutes. If your comment is more generally about something that the county could do that is not on the agenda, we'll have a different comment period at the end of, of the meeting or after we finish these resolutions. So do we have any public commenters?
Yeah, David Morgan.
Good to see you. He made the trip to Lower Marion this time.
Went to the free library and took the train here. It was great. Good evening, everyone. I'm from, David Morgan from Ambler. I often go to the meetings, and I often advocate for the residents and businesses about taxes. So I'm going to first, though, say something outstanding, I think is in the RFPs, I'm sorry, in the Exhibit B, we have number three for maternity care coalition, help for maternal birth outcomes being successful, especially in minorities. And the Monco Mama's program in the past has done this, so I think that's an outstanding, life-supporting effort, so I hope that can be very successful. I know Pregnancy Resource Centers, which have like three hundred successes a year, so it's really great. Then going backwards a little bit, we have the PFM Financial. This is a cautionary thing for me, because in bonds, we have more borrowing, which causes more costs and eventually causes more taxes. So that being out of bond proceeds, I am wary about that one. Then going back before that one, we have in Exhibit A, the cost savings, which is definitely a theme I have, is if this office can generate much more cost savings than the cost of the office, great, hope that works really well. But I often speak about the taxes because we've had about five years I've charted with a tax acceleration going on so that we have, if you look at your tax bills, if you can see them, maybe they go to your mortgage company. But for three point four, jumping up to five point two this year is a increasing arc, which is actually a segmented geometric progression because you're multiplying certain percentages. And the percentages I have charted here on this chart, I've shown this commissioners before. This has a start with five percent starting in twenty twenty one with the millage jumping there, then eight percent, then eight percent, then thirteen percent, then nine point six nine. If you stay on the top line and look at your top line of your tax bills, you can calculate it. And so that's a fifty two, almost fifty two percent increase. And that long term, a lot of people don't know about, they just hear a snapshot one year. So I think we really have to say something to commissioners about that cause because it affects homelessness, it affects the pressure on our finances if you've got a tax for for the school district, if you've got a tax for other things and also cost of food and everything else going up. And so in terms of cost controlling, I bring out agenda items. And so one one lately has been related to additional salaries or the large buildings like the four hundred fifteen million dollar Justice Center. So that these capital projects could be capped and made safe but ended so we can check them off. But they seem to go rolling each year, five year plans. And then also personnel and salaries, we had in one aspect of the meeting is July, we had thirty five law firms contracted to help. But now in this January ninth, all these positions were added as new positions. So the cost of that, including five solicitors down there bottom, becomes very exorbitant. So say to your commissions or pay, say to them you're concerned about taxes or six year tax increase. Thank you very much.
Okay, I think we're good. We'll move on to approval of the minutes.
Is there anyone else or did I do?
That's it.
Oh, right.
Anybody online?
No.
Is there a motion to approve the March twentieth twenty twenty five minutes of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners meeting? Moved by Commissioner DeBello, is there a second? Taken by Commissioner Winder, any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes are approved. Moving on to resolutions, I'll ask Bill Hartman to present an authorization toward an open space grant to Riverbend Environmental Education Center. And I'll I'll just make some comments. Bill, do you want me to go first, Bill?
Sure.
I'll just give you a minute. So I'll just give a little bit of background. You'll hear from Bill as well as Executive Director of Riverbend. But for those of you, anyone know what Riverbend is? You know, the Riverbend, yes, you start clapping if you know it, that's the right response. But Riverbend is a fantastic place where kids learn about the environment. It's been a cornerstone of environmental education in our community for fifty years. I was proud to celebrate that with them last year. Every year, ten thousand students visit the center. It's right here in Lower Marion at the bend of the river on the Schuylkill. And kids have the opportunity to learn hands on about conservation. So over the past several months, Riverbend has been actively raising the funds to try to purchase land that is adjacent to their current space and center. It's it's vacant land. It's eighteen fifty Spring Mill Road is the address and the goal is to preserve that for community use. So today, Bill is going to tell us about the open space boards recommendation on this and the grant funding that we can provide.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners, for having me tonight and for providing that brief introduction. I'm going to repeat a little bit of that, so bear with me as we go through here. But yes, at our February twenty sixth Open Space Board meeting, the county Open Space Board did unanimously recommend an open space grant award of five of four hundred thousand dollars to Riverbend Environmental Education Center to assist in funding Riverbend's acquisition of the four point two acre privately owned property that you just referenced in Lower Marion Township. And tonight, we're seeking your approval to allocate these grant funds to Riverbend. As you know, Riverbend is a revered environmental education center in Lower Marion with a mission to connect people to nature and equitably advance environmental literacy through outdoor STEM education and free play in nature. In twenty twenty four alone, Riverbend welcomed nearly twelve thousand students for environmental education, seventy percent of whom were low income. Riverbend is the largest environmental education program for Montgomery County schools. And this map shows the Montgomery County, obviously, and you can see Riverbend at the top of Lower Marion Township down in the lower right hand corner. If you could jump to the next slide, please. Right. Before entering Riverbend's thirty acre property, Sawmill Run, which is a tributary to the Schuylkill River, flows through an adjacent privately owned four point two acre parcel of land located immediately adjacent to and south of Riverbend's main property. Riverbend relies heavily on the section of Sawmill Run on this adjacent private parcel for its environmental programming. And the current owner has historically allowed Riverbend to use the stream for these purposes. So just to orient everybody using this slide right here, the property that's in orange or or red is Riverbend's thirty acre parcel. And then to the south of that, you see in blue the four point two acre adjacent private parcel. And if you could jump to the next slide, please. Now we're zooming in a little bit more closely to where these two properties above one another. Again, Riverbend's property at the top in orange and the four point two acre property in blue below. That dashed yellow line that you see on the right hand side of the private property represents that portion of Sawmill Run that I was just talking about that Riverbend uses for its environmental education. So you can see that segment that runs through the private property that's so important to Riverbend. This adjacent four acre property is currently at risk of being sold and the potential loss of access to those one hundred and seventy five linear feet of Sawmill Run on it would severely curtail Riverbend's ability to conduct the programming that's so core to its mission. The adjacent four acre property has also been heavily deforested and is currently in poor ecological condition with the riparian corridor along Sawmill Run degraded. In response to the potential sale of this parcel, Riverbend has been actively fundraising to acquire it to maintain and grow its program offerings and once acquired, ecologically restore it, including along Sawmill Run. The property was appraised at one point two million dollars and Riverbend is striving to raise one point four million dollars to buy the land and initiate its restoration efforts. Among other sources of funds, Riverbend has applied for a grant from DCNR's C two P two program, which is a state agency and the state grant program to assist in funding the acquisition. And if you could jump to the next slide, please. This is a outline and description of the funding picture as it stands today. I'm not going to go through these numbers specifically, but on the left hand side, you can see how funds would be used, including the purchase price and then some of the restoration work. And on the right hand side in that box, you see the current funding sources that are being sought or have been secured with the top line being the four hundred thousand dollars that the county is proposing to provide as an open space grant. If you could jump to the next slide. Riverbend's acquisition of the four point two acre private parcel will result in several conservation benefits. This acquisition is consistent with the county's current comprehensive plan, Monaco twenty forty, as listed on this slide. And from an outcome perspective, this acquisition will eliminate the parcel's development potential. It will preserve the stretch of Sawmill Run that's so critical to Riverbend's programming. It will create additional outdoor teaching spaces to support Riverbend's important mission. It will allow for the ecological restoration of four acres of severely degraded landscape and provide connections to adjacent local trails. The environmental, the environment and the children of Montgomery County and beyond will be the beneficiaries of this acquisition. As I mentioned earlier, the Open Space Board did unanimously recommend an open space grant award of four hundred thousand dollars to Riverbend to assist in its acquisition of the subject adjacent four point two acre parcel in Lower Marion. This recommendation was conditioned upon Riverbend obtaining DCNR funding pursuant to its grant application or alternatively similar funding from other sources. Thanks.
Do you have any questions? So before I ask, let me ask Aaron to speak, Aaron Riley, who's the Executive Director of Riverbend. I'll just say it's gotten a little complicated in the last week or so because it takes quite a bit of time to put together the kinds of resources for Riverbend to make this purchase. And in a competitive marketplace, sometimes the sellers just want to sell, right? So I think there was an impression initially that Riverbend would have the first right of refusal on this that you know, may have been more of just an oral commitment and, you know, not a signed agreement. And so there may be someone who is in the process of buying this space. However, there's a period of time contingencies where they examine whether they can build a home or have other uses on the space and we're now in that space of time. And a home has never been built on this space before, so perhaps there's a chance that that's not possible. So by providing a grant, we're giving them the ability to still come in and purchase the land if that if either that, you know, doesn't go through because it cannot be used for a home. Or because the buyer hears about this from the meeting and decides to see what legal contractual right they may have to go forward with the sale because they see the public value in this. And, you know, I've also talked to the township and working with our solicitors to see, you know, is this a case where we could have a public park here? Because right now there's nothing on the land and and, you know, from personal experience, from what I've seen with Riverbend, my own kid, you know, playing in a creek like the one that's on this land is, I mean, it's 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 amazing to see their, you know, learning about nature, their curiosity. And we just don't have a lot of spaces like that in in Lower Marion, in Montgomery County, especially down here. There are many more, actually, if you go up to the north and the western part of the county. But, you know, that's where we are right now. But I'll I'll ask Aaron Riley to come up and and provide more information about this. Thank you.
Thanks so much, Commissioners, and thank you to Bill and to Scott France at the county and to everybody in the township, Brandon Ford, Mr. Zell obviously here tonight, other folks in the township who've also helped step forward with grant funds to make it possible for Riverbend to preserve this open space. Absolutely right. Riverbend has been in Lower Marion fifty years and we serve ten to twelve thousand children a year. And so what we see with kids is that childhood is really different now. It's happening a lot on screens. And so we all know the benefits of getting outside in nature for kids, even for ourselves. I mean, thinking about April is stress month. Getting outside is an antidote to the pace and the intensity of contemporary life. So we know that we have to have, just as Commissioner McKees just said, we have to have this, the natural spaces in our township and in our county to get these kids out. So we're really optimistic about this parcel. Like we, like the commissioner explained, we would have to get really creative to think about how to continue Riverbend's educational programming without the stream on this parcel. So we're really hopeful that it all comes together. And Montgomery County is known for its green spaces. It's a point of pride for our county. We're really lucky to live in a place where county government and township government cares about environment, cares about open space, cares about sustainability. I'm excited that the county's leadership in having an open space fund has opened up some conversation here in Lower Marion about the potential creation of an open space fund here in the township. So lots of good has come from this process already. And we're very excited to hopefully accept this grant in hopes of securing eighteen fifty Spring Mill Road. Thank you so much and thanks again to the staff.
Any questions? No, okay. So thank you so much. So we'll move to a vote. So this is an authorization for four hundred thousand in grant funding to award an open space grant to Riverbend Environmental Education Center as described by Bill Hartman. Is there a motion to approve resolution number one?
A motion.
Moved by Commissioner Winder, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DeBello, any board comment? All in favor? Aye, so the motion passes. So thank you and thank you, Bill, and we'll keep everyone updated on these developments. And if you are the person who's trying to buy eighteen fifty Spring Mill Road, please give us a call and we will name a beautiful grove after you on the park. And tens of thousands of children will see it in the years to come. So with that, we'll move on to the establishment of the Advisory Council on Artificial Intelligence for Public Good. And you'll hear from Stephanie Tipton. We hear from you or do you want to hear?
If you don't mind indulging me as I'm in double duty here.
Go ahead.
You, yeah, we have a few slides just to talk about. So, good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. Stephanie Tipton, I'm Deputy Chief Operating Officer here in Montgomery County. So before the board today is a resolution to create the Montgomery County Advisory Council on Artificial Intelligence for Public Good. This council will help us take advantage of new AI technologies in a smart, thoughtful and responsible way to better serve our residents and improve how we work inside government. It's about using innovation to solve real problems while staying grounded in ethics, fairness and transparency. You can stay on this slide, Gab. Yeah, you're good. So the purpose of the council is pretty simple, to make sure that Montgomery County uses artificial intelligence in a way that is ethical, effective and people focused. This means better public services, more official, efficient internal processes and smarter ways to engage our community, all while protecting equity, privacy and accountability. And so here in Montgomery County, we're really aiming to lead by example with the formation of this council. You can go to the next slide. Thank you. So to do this well, we're setting up two connected teams as part of this resolution. First, an advisory council made up of seven to fifteen outside experts from a range of fields, including technology, healthcare, public safety, construction and more. These members might come from the private sector, academia or the public itself. Second, we will have an internal working group made up of county staff and as well as other stakeholders as needed. They will handle the hands on work of putting all of these ideas into action. We believe this structure brings together both outside perspectives and internal know how. Go to the next slide. So the advisory council will help us stay current with what's happening in AI, recommend use cases that make sense for local government and help us avoid risks like bias or misuse. We recognize that we don't have all of that expertise in house. And so we're really hoping that members of the public will participate in the council to help give us some of that guidance. The working group itself will make those ideas, take those ideas and lead the way on training and communication and implementation inside county departments. And together, they'll make sure our approach is practical, responsible and very much tailored to our community needs. Go to the next slide. So there's several focus areas that are recommended through this advisory council. They'll focus on areas where artificial intelligence can genuinely help us do better, not by replacing people, but by giving us smarter tools to support good decision making and improved service delivery. So you'll see here, smart governance and open data, which is how AI can really help us spot trends in real time, improve how we share information to the public and make it easier for residents to access services. Another focus area will be finance and procurement. So for example, we might be able to leverage AI to help flag unusual patterns that can help us prevent fraud or overspending. The goal here is to make sure every tax seller goes further with faster processing and hopefully fewer delays. In areas like health and human services, AI can help staff potentially identify high risk cases sooner, coordinate care more effectively and manage larger caseloads. As it relates to public safety, AI tools can help assist first response. As it relates to public safety, AI tools can help assist first responders in analyzing data and crime trends or improve resource deployment. And lastly, another focus area for the council is legal, ethical and regulatory compliance. And so we will be holding ourselves to a very high standard when it comes to fairness, privacy and accountability. So this means making sure that we have very clear rules on how AI is used, making sure those rules are followed. Bias, discrimination and misuse are risks and this council will help us prevent them before they start. But across all these areas, the focus will be on transparency, impact for residents and measurable results. So our next steps from here, you can go to the next slide. Thanks. So if the resolution to create the council is approved today, here's what comes next. We will open up applications for people interested in serving on the council, so please look out for that. We will launch the working group and start building teams around various focus areas and will begin laying the groundwork for meaningful, well-governed use of AI across the county. So, thank you. We definitely believe that this effort will position Montgomery County to be a leader with the care and confidence as this technology evolves. And I respectfully ask for your support in approving the resolution today.
Thank you.
Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions?
What was the last, the focus teams? What was that?
Um, so let me just go back. There is a few focus areas and I wouldn't say this is all-inclusive. I think there's going to be things that emerge as we bring the, the group together, but these were the main areas. So smart governance and open data, finance, procurement, health and human services, public safety and legal, ethical and regulatory compliance. And this is really based upon where we have seen trends in the use of AI in local government.
Yeah, thank you for your work on putting this together.
Absolutely. I'm very excited about this. I think there are many different opportunities to show how we can improve service and better represent our constituency through transparency, inclusion and impact. And a lot is going to change in the next few years more rapidly than we imagine. But in government, if we focus on staying ahead of the curve, we can make sure that we do the best by our residents. So thank you for putting this together and I'll ask, is there a motion to approve resolution number two as described by Stephanie Tipton?
I'll make a motion.
Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is passed. Finally, there's appointments to be made to the Montgomery County Planning Commission as described in Exhibit G3. Is there a motion to approve resolution number three as described in G3?
I'll make a motion.
By Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. The motion is passed. Next, I'll ask Tony Brew, our chief HR officer, to present the personnel list.
All right. Good evening, commissioners. You should have in front of you the final copy of the commissioner's department's personnel list. It's a three-page document dated April 2nd, 2025 with a timestamp of 1:37 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for your consideration.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve the April 3rd, 2025 personnel presentation as given by Mr. Anthony Brew?
So moved.
Moved by Commissioner DiBello. Is there a second?
A second.
Added by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
You know, moving on to bids and RFPs on Exhibit A. Is there a motion to approve the advertisement of bids and RFPs for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit A?
Will move.
Moved by Commissioner DiBello. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? So I'll comment on one, which is on item seven, we have an RFP for contract optimization and cost savings. This is just one proactive step in responsible financial stewardship. And it's not just about saving money, but it's making sure that we're spending it wisely. So we'll be looking to partner with an organization that could help us review our vendor contracts, identify inefficiencies like unused services, overlapping agreements, and help us find opportunities to renegotiate contracts wherever possible. And this is just part of our broader set of initiatives under the Office of Innovation Strategy and Performance to open up smarter ways of doing business. And it means making decisions based on data and ensuring that every dollar goes further for our residents. So it's, you know, not always a super splashy thing to talk about the public procurement process, but it's really important, especially now when there's uncertainty over federal funding and other issues that may arise. So, you know, I'm glad we've got that in there and I thank the team for pulling that together. Awesome. Any other comments? So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you. Moving on to awards of contract. Is there a motion to approve the contract awards amendments and renewals for Montgomery County on attached Exhibit B? Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, so now we move on to the general public comment period. Oh, we have one more. Sorry, we've got one more. Don't forget the terrorism task force. So we have awards of contract for the Southeast PA Regional Task Force under Exhibit C. Is there a motion to approve contracts, awards, amendments and renewals for Southeast PA Regional Task Force on attached Exhibit C? Moved by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner DiBello. Any board comment? All in favor? Aye.
Aye, sorry.
Aye. Motion passes. Okay, now we move on to general public comment. All public comments must be relevant or germane to county business. And you have three minutes. I don't know where the clock is. Maybe it's on the, clock's over there. So do we have any commentators?
Jim McCoy.
Go ahead.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Jim McCoy. I'm the chief of Law Marine Fire Department. I'm here to do something a little different. I'm going to thank you for all your help and support. You're an important part of our everyday fire service, not only Law Marine, but Montgomery County. Commissioner, you stole some of my highlights, I guess. Great minds seek the lights. I'm going to talk a little bit about what we also do. First, I want to thank you for your support at the Fire Academy. Director Cavallano and his team run a phenomenal program for us. As you heard, last year, Law Marine had 5,500 hours of training just at the Fire Academy there alone, on top of in-house training. The certifications and knowledge are the foundation of what our firefighters need and use as we go forward every day. Your support when you opened up training of the rescue world a couple of years ago and added that important piece to our firefighter training where they leave now with not only confined space, but vehicle rescue and other rescue operations is a valuable part. You talked about Director McCann and his team at DOC, which is invaluable to us. The toolbox that he brings to us with special operations is invaluable. Having the experts on-site for hazmat, for confined space, for swift water, for all his special operations is a tool that we at a moment's notice can pick up and call and have somebody within our community very quickly. Your continued support for his assets is important. I hope you continue to keep that as a priority moving forward. But those tools are valuable, not only for Law Marine, but for everybody in Montgomery County. And the last is the message of you guys put your money where your mouth is, your tax program. Last year, you enacted the real estate tax program for all volunteer firefighters, EMS in the county. Your 100% support only piggybacks the rest of the communities in the area. Law Marine started this, and I'll give you a little matrix that'll really help you how this program works. In 2019, we have 24 firefighter EMS personnel. Take advantage of that. This year, we have close to 50. So in six years, we've doubled our money to help these people be a part of our recruitment and retention and our fire service in the community and EMS program. I'd ask for some help with you guys. Can you go and advocate to the other communities in the township? Not only on the local level, but on the school district level. The school district is the biggest piece of this pie. We have Commissioner Dan Bernheim, who's our advocate here in Law Marine. And the school district has helped with a little bit. He continues to push. But if we can help to get 100% of the school districts throughout the county, throughout the communities, as well as the other communities that kick in, that'd be another great tool that would help the fire service going forward. So again, on behalf of Law Marine, we thank you for your support and help and from everybody else, thank you.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
And I'll just say, you know, that's one of those examples where Lower Marion led the way and really gave us some guidance on the tax rebate. And for those who don't know, that was our first vote as, as, as three commissioners. We unanimously passed this tax rebate and we're the largest county in the Commonwealth to have done so for first responders. And absolutely, we, we've got to get out to every township because the biggest part of the bill is the school taxes. And if school boards can enact this and townships, that'll make a big difference.
It's a big help. Dean Torndone, who I've known from Law Marine, he was a great advocate for this. He helped us. We had a few growing pains like we're doing every first year, but they're far outweighed the positives versus the few stumbling blocks though. Thank you.
Thank you.
Rochelle Austin Binlinberg, I'm sorry. Rochelle? Okay, we'll move on. Randy Libros?
Thank you. Yeah, my name is Randy Libros. I live in Cheltenham Township and in Melrose Park area of Cheltenham Township. And, you know, our, since, since the last election, neighbors in our, in our neighborhood have been meeting. And a number of our neighbors are immigrants. And so we've been really concerned about what, what's going on and where we're seeing, even in just this, the, the recent days and weeks, people who were here legally have been snatched up and, and deported. And I know that there's a limit to how much the county can do in relation to federal, federal policy and federal enforcement. But, you know, through our, our activities, for example, we, we ran an immigration, know your rights program last Saturday. And we had, we had about 36 people from around the township who came representing, you know, many different, many, you know, many different communities within the township. And, you know, we had representatives from Aganian Church. We had, you know, someone from the Korean community. We've been in touch with a Vietnamese temple. There, there's a, there's a large immigrant presence in our, in our community. And in the process of, of doing this work and doing this outreach, we've, you know, we've learned about the welcoming, welcoming county resolution that, that has been recommended. And I'm just here to say, we really think that's important. We really, you know, want to know that, you know, immigrants, you know, we hear a lot about immigrants are, you know, contributing to our, contribute to our economy in so many ways. And that's all very true, but immigrants are also our neighbors. They're also our friends. And they're, they're very vulnerable now. And we really want to know that the county is there, you know, in, in full support. So, thank you.
Thank you. Well, I'll just take a moment to introduce, is Nellie here? So Nellie Jimenez, Arvalo Jimenez, is our brand new and first ever for Montgomery County Director of Immigrant Affairs. And Nellie has an extraordinary background. She was president and CEO of Aklamo in Norristown, which is just pillar of the community there, provides everything from ESL, childcare and health. There's a health clinic, but someone who really understands the needs of, of a community in Norristown and also other immigrant communities across Montgomery County. And we have 100,000 people in Montgomery County who are foreign-born and immigrants. And they're our friends. They're our neighbors. They're my parents, right? They're, they're essential to everything that is, that's great about our county and, and, and what we appreciate here. So we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we adequately represent and serve them as well as any other residents. So you have that assurance from me. And thank you for organizing with your, with your neighbors.
Thank you.
Next caller?
Pam Albright? Pam? Hi, good evening. My name is Pam Albright. I also live in Cheltenham in Melrose Park area. And first of all, I wanted to thank the commissioners for, for when everyone else was cutting out their DEI programs and their offices, that you actually added people to your office of DEI, diversity, equity and inclusion. I was really thrilled to see that you're taking a strong stand in that area. And also I was thrilled that you added a staff person to the Department of Immigrant Resources that you just mentioned. And I think that's a very positive step for our, our county. But I also wanted to encourage the, just having the welcoming county be like a, just to further strengthen the stand that our county is doing in support of our immigrant and refugee community. You know, in our neighborhood, we were really heartbroken to find out that a lot of kids in our, well, some kids in, in the bus stops in our, you know, half a block from us, were talking about how they were afraid their parents were going to get deported. You know, there was a real fear that kids were talking to each other about. And I, I, I don't like to hear that kind of trauma that our kids are experiencing. So I want us to be able to protect our neighbors and friends who are vital members of our community. And, and, you know, we don't want the kids and the families to be living in fear. We also, the welcoming county would also, would be a way of ensuring that government employees are not communicating data sharing or collaborating with ICE and that they have services accessible in languages used by our immigrant populations in our county. So I just think this will be further solidify what you're already doing. But I really want to thank you for your support and your, your desire to protect all, our whole community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Jim Sullivan? Amy, Amy Freed?
Good evening. I'm rising to encourage the commissioners also to adopt a welcoming resolution for immigrants. My grandparents were immigrants. And the, I wanted to say that what's very essential about this welcoming act is non-cooperation with ICE. And their indiscriminate rounding up of both documented and undocumented immigrants that we've seen. One example of that is the person, the man who was sent to El Salvador when he was sent by his parents here to escape gang violence and gang threats and was by ICE deported without due process to El Salvador, into a prison in El Salvador. I also wanted to just, you know, speak in favor of the fact that hopefully this resolution will continue after you have, as commissioners have moved on. So while we might have a sympathetic ears here tonight, that may not be the case going forward. I'm not so naive as to think that this administration is the first to deport people, people who are undocumented without due process. But we have an administration now, a federal administration, that is scapegoating the undocumented. And we must have some sort of umbrella protection for them, not programs here and there. And I would also urge the commissioners not to allow the use now and in the future of the Monco Detention Center in cooperation with ICE and that that be written, that there be a resolution there or written somehow into the law. um, in cooperation with ICE, um, and that that be written, that there be a resolution there, um, or written somehow into, uh, the law. That is, um, something that I don't think we should be participating in as a county. Um, am I allowed to speak on a completely separate issue or do I have to?
Sure.
Yeah, okay. Uh, just in terms of, um, the, there's a development of the Melrose Park Country Club, uh, in East Cheltenham. Um, we did get recommendations for it, uh, from Monaco Planning Commission, but they really have no teeth. And this is the last large open space in, um, in Cheltenham. Um, we didn't know about any of this. The citizens didn't know about the, um, being bought by a developer. Um, and so had no time to apply for any grants or any, any way to, um, for this not to be a housing development. Um, these are not, this is not affordable housing either. These begin at seven or $800,000. Um, the township is very, you know, in the red and basically looks to most any sort of development to, um, to help, um, you know, put, uh, have enough funding. And just one more quick thing, um, and that is that, um, I would encourage the county to consider putting together, uh, some money, uh, money or monies so that, um, folks can, um, can, uh, use this money to preserve open space, even if they don't have a lot of lead time, which we had none. Um, we had no lead time at all. So, um, I would encourage that something be developed along those lines. And, you know, anybody can contact me and I'd be happy to work on that.
Absolutely. We can tell you about the open space fund. And there's a number of, um, our team that are here that you can talk to. They'll appoint themselves out.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, commissioners. My, my name is Tom Peterson. I'm a 32-year resident of Montgomery County in Cheltenham Township. I'm also a 27-year small business owner. Um, I'm also the son of an immigrant and, um, my two uncles were also immigrants. Um, I'm here to urge you to adopt legislation for the welcoming act for Montgomery County for immigrants. I want to also mention that Pittsburgh, Philadelphia, Erie, as well as your sister county in Montgomery County, Maryland, have a similar type of resolution for welcoming for immigrants. You know, we are, we are a nation of immigrants and their rights are under attack right now. So I want to mention one specific thing that I believe this kind of a welcoming act would help with, which is that the police forces at the township level in Montgomery County would be looking for some sort of guidance about how they would interact with ICE. If there were a raid, somebody was, you know, uh, tried to be removed from some sort of a business. The, the individual township police forces would be looking for some sort of guidance at the county level for what they would do in that sort of a situation. And if you had a unified policy along those lines, then police forces would be able to, it wouldn't necessarily, you know, be, um, a requirement, but they would have guidance at the county level and then they could work in, in tandem with each other to have a, a similar policy about how they would handle, um, you know, cooperation with ICE. Um, not suggesting they wouldn't operate within the law, but they do not have to cooperate with everything that ICE would, would ask for during a raid. Um, so I want to ask you whether you will be considering that sort of a welcoming act in Montgomery County.
Ben, do you want to answer?
That whether we will consider one?
Yeah, absolutely. The answer is absolutely, but go ahead.
Well, we can, uh, I mean, the commissioners can consider one, we'll review it on solicitor's office level. One of the challenges, and I think you pointed to it, is that the county doesn't have control over the municipality actions in the Pennsylvania structure. So, um, there is, you know, an importance of just being clear with the boundaries of what a welcoming act can do in terms of protecting residents and making sure people understand, um, the limits of the county authority um, and interactions with the government.
Okay. But you would be happy to consider that sort of a, a resolution or legislation or whatever it would be?
So I can, I can jump in. Um, first, let me thank you for, for coming out, uh, in support of your friends and neighbors. Um, I've had a lot of conversations. I know Commissioner McKeja and I have had a lot of conversations with organizations uh, that have pushed us to do this. Um, I'm certainly open to it. And, um, I always talked about how, um, you know, I think about when I moved here, when I was just five years old and we were one of a, a few black families in the neighborhood. And, uh, how our friends and neighbors welcomed us with open arms. That's the kind of Montgomery County that I want to ma- maintain. And so, you know, we do have limitations, uh, within our office, uh, but, you know, we'll continue, uh, to have the courage uh, to implement policy that protects everyone that calls Montgomery County home. You know, I think, uh, what we're up against, uh, candidly, um, and you all are seeing this, you know, probably every night, uh, on, on the news stream, um, is that, you know, officials like us, um, you know, are under, under threat. Being challenged to be persecuted if we continue to implement DEI programs or if we do things to support immigrants. And so this is a tight rope that we're on, right? Because what we don't want to do, so we don't want to be in a situation where we lose our federal funds. Uh, but we can't change our values, right? Because the President of the United States changes. And so we're trying to stay true to the values that we hold dear, um, or I hold dear. I can't speak for everyone on this day. But I'm, I'm committed to, you know, working with our solicitor to see what we can do, uh, without jeopardizing all of the federal funds that we rely on to deliver our programs and services. So, uh, we got to continue to stand up for our friends and neighbors. And it takes courage, uh, to make decisions to do that. Um, so if you got, you all, um, across Montgomery County can continue to be loud about this issue, uh, we'll do it behind the scenes, uh, to, to execute the, the full power of our, of our role, um, and, and protect our friends and neighbors. So that's not a clear answer, but that we're on a tight rope here. Um, we're trying to think about thoughtful ways, uh, that we can do, uh, what some of you are asking.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Yeah. I'll just add, um, another point, but are there any other comments on this topic too? Go ahead.
They didn't put the subject matter.
Okay. Um, I'll just give one example of something that happened in the last, uh, few weeks. But there's a company called, uh, NPS Discovery, uh, in Horsham, which does testing of drugs. Um, that's either, I think largely given to them by law enforcement. They can test whether there's, uh, you know, a, a batch of fentanyl, uh, or they, they test the emergence of different drugs like, uh, xylazine. At like, sometimes much earlier before they become prevalent. And I think our district attorney is here, he can tell you all about it, but they do critical work, uh, in terms of giving us the heads up of what's on the street before, uh, it becomes, uh, as big of a problem as it could. And that helps the law enforcement response, the public health response and, uh, at all levels of government, really. Uh, they had a $2 million grant from the DOJ that was frozen. And it was because ostensibly, uh, because, uh, we are somewhere labeled as a sanctuary jurisdiction, along with a, a large number of counties, virtually every collar county of Philadelphia is on that list. And it's sort of extraordinary that, uh, that money would be held, uh, back, uh, which is, uh, you know, essential to make sure that we're keeping people safe and healthy, uh, in our communities, uh, under, you know, under, uh, the, uh, a guidance that the DOJ promulgated. Uh, but, uh, as soon as the press wrote about it a week ago, the funding came back. So much of what is happening, and by the way, that's not without a problem because they have 1,500 samples that they're behind on that they need to test because they, they furloughed people because they didn't get $2 million in federal funding. So it's inactive harm, but when anyone actually tests this and brings to light what has happened, including we had $5 million that were taken away from homeless shelters like Laurel House. Um, the fact is the administration doesn't really have a legal basis to stand on and they're losing in court every day. Uh, we still don't have the certainty we would like because these cases have not gone on to the Supreme Court. But fundamentally, the federal government cannot force a local government to enact immigration policy, for example. It's just not our job to enforce immigration policy. And there's plenty of Supreme Court precedent that says, uh, that we don't have to engage in that. And we have plenty of other issues to work on, as you've heard in this meeting, uh, rather than, uh, you know, acting as a regional office, uh, to the federal government. There's a lot of local issues to deal with and that's what we're going to prioritize. But go ahead.
Kevin Steele?
So, uh, thanks for coming to Lower Marion. Um, welcome. Uh, this is a place that I have, uh, made my home for the last 30 years. Um, and we feel very blessed to, uh, have the community here that, that we do. Gotten to coach, uh, boys and girls' basketballs and basketball in most of the gyms here. As well as in Narberth on, uh, on the summer courts, which I highly recommend to everybody because it's a, it's a great basketball league. Um, gotten to be the, uh, the civ- local civic association, uh, president, run our Fourth of July parade. And, um, and it's a wonderful, wonderful, uh, community. Um, also gotten to be on the, the Lower Marion Fire Department Board, um, uh, for our local department. That's my longest board, uh, since, uh, 1998, uh, on that board. And, uh, somehow I've been re-elected vice president, I think 20 times at this point. So, um, it's, uh, it, it's a great community to, to live in and, and raise a family in. Unfortunately, uh, we're susceptible to, um, to bad things happening here, um, though too. And, uh, my friend, uh, Jim McCoy, uh, we lost firefighter, a volunteer firefighter and, and a number of people that were injured. Um, I prosecuted the case myself. Um, and you know, it's, it's hard on the community and the support that you give to the volunteer agencies is, is meaningful with this. You know, five minutes down the road, uh, from here, we had a home invasion, uh, we had a murder. Uh, we had a, uh, terrible murder and attempted murder, uh, in, in that home. Uh, Chief Block, Superintendent Block, uh, is here. He has an incredible team, uh, that worked very hard with our chief county detective's team, uh, to solve the case and, and bring it in. The investigative aspect of what they did is really, really special. Um, and I don't think it happens in, in many places. Second part of that is, is my job now to, to shepherd that through, um, the criminal justice system and hold the people accountable that have done that. Um, and I just ask, and I continue to ask, um, that you support the public safety, um, aspect of this. Um, that you support, uh, the prosecutors, um, that are doing this work, uh, every day. Um, and in the trenches every day. And, uh, I, um, I got you all a, a memo today. I hope you'll, um, take a look at it, uh, and consider some of the needs, uh, that, that we have. Um, those needs in comparison to some of the, the investments that you've made. So I'm down to 10 seconds. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Munira Walker?
Good evening. I naturally gravitate to this side. This is where I stand while I advocate for the community. Um, I'm Munira Walker from Neighbors Helping Neighbors on the main line of Ardmore, Pennsylvania. Welcome to Lower Marion Commissioners. Very excited to see you here. I'm grateful that you came. I know you toured Ardmore. I wish there had been time or had been thought to bring you just two more blocks over so you could experience the beauty of South Ardmore, which is our community. Um, you kind of toured the whole outskirts. And once again, you know, here we were, they're right there, um, within touching distance, but not touched. Um, but next year, welcome to come to Neighbors Helping Neighbors anytime and meet the wonderful residents, so many of whom you saw here this evening represented as volunteers for Neighbors Helping Neighbors. Um, I wanted to, well, there's a few things I want to say, and I'm speaking for a lot of people, so I took some notes. So excuse me for glancing down at my phone every now and again. Um, but three minutes is a big responsibility for about a couple thousand people. Um, but I wanted to not only welcome you, but I wanted to thank you publicly in front of our community for the Nurish Monaco Grant that you've approved again. It really helps us get food to the people. It really supports us. And, um, I can't say enough how important that is, that you supported us in that way. Um, I also really appreciate you standing up for residents and neighbors. And I want to draw recognition to all the neighbors and residents who are standing up for local government. Um, it's not lost on me that a lot of the work that's done in the communities are, is not seen in the light it deserves. It truly does support the work of local government and a lot of which would not be anywhere near as successful if it were not for the hard work of the residents and the neighbors. Um, so I'm speaking on that behalf, um, this evening. Uh, had you come down into South Ardmore today to Neighbors Helping Neighbors, you would have seen all the people you saw here stand up today with me, packing bags of food to deliver to over 130 households. You would have watched us pack this morning. Had you stopped in a little bit later, you would have seen all my drivers show up to take that food out to all the residents. Had you stopped in a little bit later than that, you would have seen all my children rolling in for homework club. Our education work is changing the face of the students here in South Ardmore. And had you rolled in after that, you would have seen my volunteers who come and clean our space and do other things for us for free because we don't have, uh, the massive amount of money that some other organizations can tout. Um, I did, I think it's only fair that I say with all the work that we do, because we do a lot. We're a hub for the youth aid panel where, uh, please, if I, I'm going to try to do this in 30 seconds, but please, um, it's for a lot, talking for a lot of people. Um, the youth aid panel where nonviolent under 18, um, people can come and do community service and, uh, direct themselves to a better way to act and be in society. Um, we also with District Courts of Montgomery County for over 18 nonviolent offenders. Uh, Office of Children and Youth, we were a huge part of the Lower Marion Township Needs Assessment. We assessed all the people who couldn't take the survey, uh, digitally. We went to the people who were blind, who were disabled, who were illiterate, who were, uh, just do things on pen and paper. We went to all those papers and got their voice into the needs assessment that's in service to you. Um, and a lot of our work is, uh, adds up to the statistics that you do get from Lower Marion Township. So, um, I just want to say just very quickly, um, because, you know, at some point, we do have to talk about the way, uh, community, uh, efforts sometimes aren't funded in ways that they really could be. And we were formed because of COVID. We were not convinced that the local government would, um, be able to put systems in place quick enough. So we jumped in as community members to save everybody through that perilous situation. We were the ones that were out there in not knowing whether we would live or die any single day in order to get food to people and to teach the children and do all those things while everyone was home. Um, and we did apply for ARPA funding from the county. We were told by Lower Marion, we had to apply to you first. Um, and then if we got turned down, then we could apply to them. So we did apply. We didn't get a penny. Um, and then we applied, uh, for Lower Marion. We did end up thankfully after a year and a half, standing at this very kind of podium, advocating, advocating, advocating for some of the ARPA funds to go to the organizations who were servicing people. Um, they did put aside a million dollars of which we got $25,000. So at Neighbors Helping Neighbors, that $25,000 equated to, for our COVID work and our relief work and our, um, and the rebuild after COVID work, that equated to $3 per person per year. So I'm here for every single community organization that is working their tails. I'm going to have people and people and people and people and people who are putting their extra time in from their day, uh, to make sure that everything does actually happen. Um, so I really appreciate you listening. And I hope that we can find ways to continue to work together the way we work with the district, the police, the the way we work with the District, the Police Department, and everyone else in Lower Marion. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Aviva Pinsky.
Good evening, Commissioners. I don't know if this is coming through. Some of the speakers are difficult to hear. I want to thank all of you for coming to Low Marion Township this evening. I have been, my name is Aviva Pinsky, and I have been a resident of Low Marion Township since 1965. So I've seen some huge changes here. And I've had children, several children in the Low Marion Schools as well. I really wanted to speak today and thank the people who spoke before me about the immigration problems here. And one of the reasons is that I have been personally mentoring refugees for over 15 years now. And from my personal experience, there really is a lot of fear. I think the only thing I can ask now is that everybody support the people who have moved into our communities because even some of the people I am mentoring, who are now citizens, are concerned and worried. And I have had to warn some of the children going to school to make sure that they carry their citizenship identification papers with them. So I'm asking that everybody support. And I guess I should specifically explain refugees are people who have are forced out of their country for some reason and are not safe. Many of them are coming from United Nations Refugee Camps. One Burmese family I helped were in a refugee camp for 13 years before they came here. They are thoroughly vetted by the US government before they are allowed to come to the United States. So these people are really here worried about their lives to start with. And now some of them, who are already citizens, are just worried about being picked up again. So we really need to help to support these people. Thank you very much.
Hope Danoff.
Everyone, it's a pleasure to be with everyone tonight. I'm here just to announce my new nonprofit, which is called Building Bridges with Hope. And what is it about? Right now, I have a toll-free help and hotline number with people who call in and get resources for the normal adult, the homeless, the drug addicted, and veterans in need. Why am I doing this? I have an extensive background in this field, both personally and professionally. I have a son with severe mental illness that right now is in Belmont Hospital for the last four months and is going to a long-term care facility. What I what I want to do is raise funds to, my first building will be in Norristown called Max's House and Cafe. And what will that be? That will be a resource center and a help center and an employment center for that population. I've worked with Hawes Church, and I've worked with the Hospitality Center. My son was a resident of Circle Lodge, Hope Works, and all of that. I understand there's a real need on specifically targeting the male population because they are the underserved. I'm raising the funds now for Max's House and Cafe. He wasn't able to do it, so I'm going to do it for him. And together, we can make this vision a reality. I plan to have my first one in Norristown and then move forward throughout Montgomery County and elsewhere. So once again, I'm looking for funds to help make this really a reality. Together, we can do this. Thank you so very much.
Elizabeth Landen.
Hi, I'm Melissa Bette Blandon. I'm from Trap. You're going to have to hear it for a sixth time. Sorry. But yeah, on behalf of the immigrants here in our county, even I guess I consider myself an immigrant. I was legally adopted from Romania. And I do carry my passport in my purse because you never know. Yeah, I've been a legal citizen for 30 years. But, I mean, even just me, my sister was also adopted from Romania. And I know plenty of other people who are legally citizens here who are just terrified out of their minds that, you know, they they read the news and they they watch the news and they see legal resident being swept up and, oh, it was an administrative error. But anyway, another plea for Montgomery County to be a welcoming county. And I know there's a delicate balancing act that y'all have to perform, I guess, with funding and everything and keeping our county afloat. But I just want to call upon you to try to come up with something. What's that do? Okay. So another thing that I would like to address is, oh, gosh, I just blanked. Sorry. LGBTQIA. I would really like to know what you guys are doing to protect the LGBTQIA community, especially trans folks and LGBTQIA youth. Because they seem to be another one of this administration's lovely target scapegoats. So I guess that's that's just my question. What what are you guys? Are you guys able to do anything to help these people? Thank you.
Thank you. I mean, I can answer, last year, we created an LGBTQ Commission to answer that question. What can we do? And I recently just met with the Chair this week. There are some counties that have adopted anti-discrimination ordinances, none of which are what are called, I guess, Dylan's Rule Counties or non-home rule counties like ours. The only counties that have done it so far are those that have their own home rule charter. It may be legally possible for us to do that, and that's what we're currently looking at. If you want to add anything, or Jamila, if you want to.
You know, it's it's it baffles me that these communities are under attack. You know, trans people represent 1% of the population, 1% of the population. And the fear that has been invoked, right? It it's absurd. So I'm like really so I'm saying all this is, you know, we just acknowledged Transgender Day of Visibility. And again, you know, we have to have these discussions about if we're public about it, right? What repercussions will happen? So we are, we are committed. We have a strong commission on LGBTQ affairs. You know, the best and the brightest minds on the issues that those from this community are facing. And they're going to be doing some amazing work and helping to inform us on particular policy areas. But I know that Commissioner McKeesha and I are out in front with those communities to at least hear the stories, hear about the ways that we can support. But, you know, I'll I'll end where I started. It's absolutely absurd, right?
Yeah.
That we are spending time on 1% of, like bullying 1% of the population. It's just, it's just painful to watch. And so just like immigrant communities, we got to, we got to keep speaking up for our friends and neighbors that some people want to make invisible.
Yeah.
And so I don't have a direct answer on exactly what we can do. But, you know, our, the way in which we do public health, right? There are many issues that are affecting the LGBTQ plus communities that we need to address in our Department of Health and Human Services. So we'll continue to work with our commission to advise us on the strategies and the policies we should be implementing to keep those friends and neighbors safe.
That's awesome. Thank you so much for your time and and your consideration. Thank you.
I'll just add as a reminder, it's pretty extraordinary to think that just in, I mean, in my lifetime, in the last 15 years, we've gone from having people in the LGBT community not being able to serve in the military, not being able to get married. And yet it's still, you know, and to having those basic rights, right? And and yet it's still legal to fire someone in our state because of who they love. And so employment protections are one of the things that we could focus on. But none of those changes happened when when people were afraid or less willing to to speak up and speak out. So just thank you for being willing to do that, even though there are those who would, you know, target and bully from a position of power. So we're going to maintain committed to representing every constituency and making sure that Monco is a place where no matter who you are, you know, you have this, you have the opportunity to thrive. Thank you. That's it. All right, so that's our public comments for today. Any closing comments from my fellow commissioners?
I want to thank everyone for hanging in there with us. It was a longer meeting. I want to thank Lower Marion again. I want to acknowledge Gary Handler, who sits on our prison board. Gary is also a leader in our community that advocates and fights for those suffering from mental health and addiction challenges. So I just want to acknowledge you because this is home turf for you. The last thing I'll say is, you know, it really is nice to see people standing up for the things that they are seeing in their communities and coming to the meeting to speak out. It shows us as elected leaders that we're not alone, right, in in our beliefs. And it's validating, you know, the work that we need to to do to ensure every every resident can thrive, like you said. So let's keep having people come out and speak about the issues that we're seeing and, you know, continue to love thy neighbor. And we're seeing evidence of that today. So it just really makes me feel good about, you know, this is the best of Montgomery County, supporting our friends and neighbors. So I want to thank those that stood up to to talk about some of the things that you're seeing happening to your friends and neighbors. That's it for me.
I just want to, I'm glad David Morgan, you're able to make it here this evening because I was concerned when we were going to be approving on Exhibit B, number three, for the return of healthcare provider. For, you know, I I was like, oh, we're going to be, it's something that you've talked about and at previous meetings. And I said, oh, you might not be here this evening. You're going to miss the, one of the things that you've been advocating for that we actually were going to be approving. So I'm glad that you're here. And I'm glad that we're able to, you know, provide that contract as well.
By by previous meetings, just everyone, everyone knows, he means every previous. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I'll just, I'll just say thank you to everyone for being here. Thank you to our staff. Thank you to everyone at Lower Marion. Last time I was in this room was for Chief Blocks. Investiture, now, is that, investiture is a term? What's the special term? Swearing in. And that was a packed room. That was a much more popular event, by the way. But, you know, I remember hearing your oath and being touched by it in terms of the the commitment to service and inclusion and representing everyone. And thank you for everything that you're doing in the community. And all of the public servants in Lower Marion for setting a great example that we can share with the rest of the county, whether it was on the tax rebate for the first responders or whether it's on sustainability or affordable housing. There are so many issues that we've been able to make advances of in a county of almost 900,000 people. It's great to to be here and to share ideas and to continue our collaboration with the leaders in Lower Marion. So with that, I will make a motion to adjourn. Yes. Well, we're going to adjourn, and then we'll have a a short meeting after that. But I'll make a motion to adjourn the April 3, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Board of Commissioners. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Winder. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned. Our next meeting is April 17 at 10:00 AM in the boardroom in Norristown. I hope to see some of you there. Mr. Morgan, I'm sure I'll see you. See you then. And we'll have a salary board meeting with Controller.
If everybody can just hold tight for a second. If everybody can just hold tight for a second.
Yeah, it's what is the quick, this is a very quick meeting. We're going to have a meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board, the Controller. Bob Hart is going to join us up here. Anthony Brew, our Chief Human Resources Officer, is going to present the salary board list. For for a five-minute break. Go ahead.
All right. Good evening, members of the Salary Board. You should have in front of you the final copy of the Salary Board List. It's a four-page document dated on April 2, 2025, at a timestamp of 1:37 PM. All positions have been reviewed and accounted for and are presented for the Salary Board's consideration. To separate new positions.
So there's, do you want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve new fires and other and I expect you to do that. I make a motion to approve everything other than new new positions.
Is there a second? Okay, seeing none, motion fails. Is there a motion to approve the April 3, 2025, Salary Board Presentation as given by Mr. Tony Brew?
On requesting to separate new positions.
So is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve the April 3, 2025, Salary Board Presentation as given by Mr. Anthony Brew. It's made by Commissioner Winder. Is there a second?
Second.
Said by Controller Bob Hart. Any board comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
No, motion passes.
No, we won't separate one thing off.
We can make a motion. Motion to adjourn the April 3, 2025, meeting of the Montgomery County Salary Board. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any board comment? All in favor? Aye, meeting is adjourned.